It's 5:30 and we have to call the order because we're going to have a budget hearing before the meeting. Okay, so we'll call the meeting of the Oswego Public Library District Board of Trustees Order and we'll go immediately into the hearing. So I state, the purpose of the hearing is to provide time for questions and comments by the public about the budget appropriations ordinance 26 dot dash one. So can we have a motion first?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the budget and appropriation ordinance form six dash one.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're in a public hearing now. Do you really want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Eric, welcome. I think hearing, hearing not, no questions from the public. We'll close the public hearing and call our meeting to order. Could we have a roll call please, Jim? Condon, here. Deal?
Yeah.
Friedman?
Here.
Parkinson's?
Here.
Ramirez?
Yeah.
Campbell?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
And the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone. Okay, move down to six, approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion? Please.
I'll make a motion to the table for regular and close session minutes from June 25th only to 24.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions about the minutes? Hearing none, Jim, roll call. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Very good. Next item is correspondence, Sarah.
We have a couple things. We have a suggestion from suggestion box about somebody who was upset that they, of the way the staff spoke to them when they asked multiple times to put shoes on the baby or socks on the baby, shoes on the baby, so she was upset about that, so add that. We also have from the village of Montgomery, we were a partner at the Montgomery Fest. And then we also received, we were at the festival and the AID local crisis team forgot to bring a tent and it was like 106 degrees, so we got an extra tent that we had for them and lent it to them, so that's the thing, you know.
Moving on.
Unfortunately during the storm, we lost the tent. So we will be getting, but the cover survived and we have it in the barn drying out and getting wet, but the poles and stuff will have to be, have been pulled, so. It was a big hit and we liked being out there, so. Let's wait for correspondence.
Still reading the socks on the baby. Moving on to financials. Could we have a motion? There, please.
Approval of the fund balance and revenue and the expense reports for June 2025 and July 2025.
Seven.
Thank you. Okay, what do we need to note?
Well, as has been in the last 30 years, everything's on budget, within budget and all together, everything looks great beginning of the year and it also has the ones both for June, which is the end of our fiscal year, and for July for next year, and we have received most, half of the funds, half the funds going into next year as well as our per capita grant check we received, so.
Is the cap, per capita one that you were concerned about?
That's the one.
Being reused?
Yep.
Was it reused?
It was not reused. We got the full quote.
Okay. Good.
Are there any questions?
Hearing none, could I have a roll call please, Jim? Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Okay, county's payable, could I have a motion on that, please?
I will make a motion to approve the 25 bills in the amount of $58,381, and August 25 bills in the amount of $395,091.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or should we not?
So on page 29, you'll see Compass Surveying, that is the survey for our street that we have just completed the purchase of on Tuesday with the VFW, so you'll own that property. The survey is over there if anybody wants to look at it, shows the property that we own on River Street in Montgomery, that's what Compass Surveying was for, for the closing of that. On page 32, we have two things, we have Stokes Excavating, that's with a demolition of 109 and 111 on River Street, and I also wanted to point special consideration to the Tech Ops Specialty Vehicles Outreach Vehicle that we have, half of it down, and they're getting the chassis in November, so they're expected sometime first of the year. And going on, on page 34, Figgins Trees and Turfs, they have added the property on North River Street from Boeing, and the grass looks pretty good. And finally, on page 36, Wally's Printing for our fall program guide, and I did send that out, everybody has a copy of that. The barn looks great on the front, did you mention who took the picture? I took that picture, so also a photographer.
Freelance?
Yes, absolutely.
I still have the pictures on my camera that day we went over there.
Yes.
Of what it did look like.
The shamed carpet on ceiling.
Of what it did look like.
It does not portray the smell though. You're smelling that.
No, you can't smell it, but up here.
Okay, any other questions on the county's payable? If not, roll call please, Jim. Walters?
Yes.
Condon abstaining. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Moving on to a new item on the agenda, not the assistant director's report, but the director's reports.
Ready to go?
As soon.
All right. So I did want to note that there are almost 300,000 items between our two locations. You'll see pictures of the Curry Fest booth, we spoke to almost 1,000 people during Curry Fest, and on the other side you'll see that they popped up Friends of the Library sale on Sundays during the farmer's market, so we're participating in the farmer's market, it gets a couple hundred, and then that would be going toward, for the Friends of the Library who donate for programs and furniture and other activities. For July, you'll see, there's a very cute picture, the services had a phone party to celebrate the summer reading and there were over 400 people there, so that was right out in the parking lot here at the Montgomery campus. I understand that there were cars all the way up and down reading, so certainly made our mark. And I also wanted to point out on director's note, that someone's been hiding books over the services shelves, the staff has been checking them periodically just to make sure that they are out and back in the collection, if someone's looking for them. We did have a request for a healthcare child, like update on how to use the library, searching for materials, how to use the ped log, how to limit the searches to child appropriate materials, this is that green form here, this is what the services has created, and it also has how to limit the types of materials to age appropriate using kid modes for Hoopla, kids filter for Libby, and then how to do the streaming and use it to make sure everything is age appropriate, so this is for the parents to take a look, to look for this. I did mention before that the River Street property from the VFW did close, so the library now owns it, so we have that property on that corner, very excited. And then the last thing is I do have a letter to the board, an official letter to the president of the board.
Sure.
You want me to read it?
Sure.
Oh gosh, okay. So, Dear President Campbell, I'm ready to officially notify you and the Library Board of your speeds of my retirement, my last official day will be September 30th, 2025. It has been a great pleasure working here for the past 31 years. I'm amazed at the library district and the library board, library staff, and our community have created. I am honored to have been a part of the continued success of such an amazing institution as the Oswego Public Library District. I am very much looking forward to seeing all the wonderful services and plans the library will be creating in the future. Thank you.
How did you read that without being quite?
I'm sorry.
She's good, she's good.
How did you do it?
Another talent.
Yeah, I'd say thank you, but no, I won't. It's, it's been a journey.
It has been.
I was chatting the other day, a very good friend of mine that I hired in 1974, I think, in Sterling, Illinois, was on this board when Sarah was hired, and he said we'd plan on having a reception or retirement, reception for her on the 18th?
Nineteenth.
At the 19th? On the 19th, from four to six, here at, there at the Oswego campus, and Roger Sanders said he would be here from Knoxville to the city, so we have a long invite list and I think each of the board members got the list, I think it's three pages long now, so please look at that and if you have anyone else that we missed, please let us know because we want to make sure that everyone has a chance to greet, meet Sarah as she starts a new journey. And we will have refreshments up in the back of the second floor overlooking the creek and the Catalpa tree that went down, and our property across the creek, so it should be a great evening, hope everyone can be there. Well, I would say with reluctance, I'll make a motion, that we accept Sarah's retirement request and wish her well. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Could you call a roll call please, Jim? Campbell? Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Moving on to a new item on the agenda, not the assistant director's report, but the director's reports.
Ready to go?
As soon.
All right. So I did want to note that there are almost 300,000 items between our two locations. You'll see pictures of the Curry Fest booth, we spoke to almost 1,000 people during Curry Fest, and on the other side you'll see that they popped up Friends of the Library sale on Sundays during the farmer's market, so we're participating in the farmer's market, it gets a couple hundred, and then that would be going toward, for the Friends of the Library who donate for programs and furniture and other activities. For July, you'll see, there's a very cute picture, the services had a phone party to celebrate the summer reading and there were over 400 people there, so that was right out in the parking lot here at the Montgomery campus. I understand that there were cars all the way up and down reading, so certainly made our mark. And I also wanted to point out on director's note, that someone's been hiding books over the services shelves, the staff has been checking them periodically just to make sure that they are out and back in the collection, if someone's looking for them. We did have a request for a healthcare child, like update on how to use the library, searching for materials, how to use the ped log, how to limit the searches to child appropriate materials, this is that green form here, this is what the services has created, and it also has how to limit the types of materials to age appropriate using kid modes for Hoopla, kids filter for Libby, and then how to do the streaming and use it to make sure everything now owns it, so we have that property on that corner, very excited. is age appropriate, so this is for the parents to take a look, to look for this. And then the last thing is I do have a letter to the board, an official letter to the president of the board.
Sure.
You want me to read it?
Sure.
Oh gosh, okay. So, Dear President Campbell, I'm ready to officially notify you and the Library Board of your speeds of my retirement, my last official day will be September 30th, 2025. It has been a great pleasure working here for the past 31 years. I'm amazed at the library district and the library board, library staff, and our community have created. I am honored to have been a part of the continued success of such an amazing institution as the Oswego Public Library District. I am very much looking forward to seeing all the wonderful services and plans the library will be creating in the future. Thank you.
How did you read that without being quite?
I'm sorry.
She's good, she's good.
How did you do it?
Another talent.
Yeah, I'd say thank you, but no, I won't. It's, it's been a journey.
It has been.
I was chatting the other day, a very good friend of mine that I hired in 1974, I think, in Sterling, Illinois, was on this board when Sarah was hired, and he said we'd plan on having a reception or retirement, reception for her on the 18th?
Nineteenth.
At the 19th? On the 19th, from four to six, here at, there at the Oswego campus, and Roger Sanders said he would be here from Knoxville to the city, so we have a long invite list and I think each of the board members got the list, I think it's three pages long now, so please look at that and if you have anyone else that we missed, please let us know because we want to make sure that everyone has a chance to greet, meet Sarah as she starts a new journey. And we will have refreshments up in the back of the second floor overlooking the creek and the Catalpa tree that went down, and our property across the creek, so it should be a great evening, hope everyone can be there. Well, I would say with reluctance, I'll make a motion, that we accept Sarah's retirement request and wish her well. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Could you call a roll call please, Jim? Campbell? Yes. Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Moving on to 13D, liability insurance quote for FY26. Sam Krista?
Sorry, correct. So this is through trip, so they go through and he looks over here to see what the evaluations are, what you need to replace, everything, you'll see that they have, we're reading throughout 32 West Jefferson and 19 North Street, they also have the vacant land listed that we have currently, so that is already being insured, so they were to do anything over there. In addition, he's gone through, we have a cyber on there, as well as, it's a little, we have an exact amount here, but Krista has added a little bit more because he noticed that our sign, our electronic sign in front of Oswego doesn't have enough insurance on it, it's affected by lightning or a car, so he's going to up that just a touch, so it's not exact, but the motion on the agenda would cover any additional funds to cover that electronic sign. And then the final amount is on page 59.
Fifty nine.
So you have the crime, cyber, workman's comp, umbrella at Montgomery.
So in total, we, it went up about 50,000?
So yes, it's, the insurance quote was 54,734, but the motion we had is for 56,000 to cover, and it went up a bit from last year, that too.
Okay.
Yeah. We did take off the buildings on River Street, but put on the land, so that's about what we got.
Moving on to the library?
It's around 52,000. It's not that high.
It's around 52,000, that was the last check, we have the exact, it's a couple thousand more.
Not a big increase.
No, I don't.
Okay.
We can get that number for you.
Okay, could we have a motion on 13D1, please?
I will approve the insurance quote for 56,000.
Second. Thank you. Questions or comments? Roll call, please. Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Okay, health, vision, dental, life insurance for eligible employees.
As written in the employee policy packet, this is something that we provide for full-time employees, we went ahead and, so, listen, I met with our health insurance provider, also heard the good news, it was not as much for us versus a lot of other places, so we're very happy with the numbers that we received. And this would be per employee, we do the amount for the HMO, base HMO, base other things, and that would be for the 880, 92, and then anything above the employee reimburses, it's for a single employee.
So that went up to $52,070.
Which is not bad.
No. Okay. Can we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the health, vision, dental, life insurance for eligible employees for 880 dollars and 90 cents per month.
Second.
Second, thank you. Questions or comments?
I have the total for trip from last year, it was 52,476.
Okay. Right on the head. Okay, any other questions and comments on the health insurance and so on? Roll call, Jim? Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Time and date for a public hearing pursuant to truth and taxation, you can move that to?
October 22nd.
October 22nd, so we have some.
It would have to be at the Montgomery campus, because I'm meeting, is that Montgomery?
Okay.
For that motion.
Okay. Just for clarification, we discovered that there's a couple of us that have already gone to the meeting on the last, or the 24th of September, so therefore I would ask the board if anyone has a conflict, if we would move that a week earlier to the 17th. Did you check your calendars? End of September seems to be a busy time.
I have a conflict, but that does not mean we shouldn't have a meeting, I have a rehearsal dinner to go to that night.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 17th? Seventeenth.
I have a career fair, I have to be back, sorry.
It's okay.
I agree with 17th.
Okay, everybody else okay?
Okay.
Sounds like a quorum. Yes.
So, set up, sub, 17?
Yep.
On September?
Please.
What time?
Regular time, 5:30.
And here?
It'll be at Oswego. So with that said, on this motion for the truth and taxation law hearing, we'll move that to October 22nd at 5:30 at the Montgomery campus, so that will be the motion for whoever would like to do that.
So it won't be on the 24th?
That's correct.
It affects on my calendar.
Okay.
No, sure. Okay, cut.
I make a motion to, to the date of the public hearing pursuant to truth and taxation laws on October 22nd at the Oswego campus?
Montgomery campus.
At Montgomery campus.
Very good. Thank you. A second?
So good.
Thank you.
Question? Oh, I'm sorry, a question that is not related specifically to them, that is, what do we need to do to change the date from that September meeting, concerning the notification we need to give?
Send something out to the papers, and they publish something in the paper stating that the time has changed and the date has changed.
Yeah.
I know you're going to be answering that, that's all I can ask.
Okay, you have a motion and a second? Roll call, Jim? Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Very good. Moving on to Frederick Quinn Contract Renewal, we do this on an annual basis, and they are our construction managers who have helped us with all of our construction projects for the last 20 years.
Three additions to Oswego, this building here, and then the agenda, five projects we've left since 2004, I think.
Wow.
Always on time, no questions.
On time, and I know what you'd like to have. Could I have that motion, please, for 13D1?
I'll make a motion to renew our contract with Frederick Quinn Corporation for future projects.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please, Jim? Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Sounds like we might be thinking about doing something, our Duverie contract.
The second half of our dynamic duo.
Our, our architects, could I have a motion for 13H1, please?
I'll make a motion to renew the contracts with Duverie for future projects. A second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Parkinson's?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Okay, who's going to talk about our cliff wall?
I can talk about the cliff wall. I will mention that since it's just been approved, I did contact Duverie to see if they could overlook this project to have an expert consultant or someone with relevant experience to confirm the words that it worked, so I'm going to show you that. So everybody would have received this packet here, we have a little bit of a wall on the bed, a tiny wall on the bed of our Oswego campus where rocks are falling down, so we had, I looked at several companies, eight companies to exact, we had one, G Stabilization, had acquired Access Limited, and they are out of St. Louis, and the gentleman came from there and met us at the location, this is their proposal here from the one from St. Louis, the other ones are all located in Oregon, California, and Canada, I did leave a message of one from Asheville, North Carolina, the issue being that these are rocks and Illinois, which has a lot of rock cliffs, and so everybody is located on the West Coast, so it's kind of hard for them to do that. When we spoke with our attorney, he said, you know, once you select the vendor, if there's a specific thing, you know, if you could try it for others, that's great, but[1783.41] you know, if you could try for others, that's great, but you might be that you have a very limited sources that can do this work. Uh, so this would mainly be to put, you know, send some pictures around of what they were discussing, kind of like a netting so the rocks don't fall on the kids that are climbing.
Anybody's driven through the Rocky Mountains or about this area where they cut the base, really, uh, officer up there and you see the, the weathering of cabling on the rocks? That's what this would do on the backside of, of Aspico campus.
Down towards greater Colorado and there did, someone came down and we sat on the road for five hours. Well, they cleaned it off. We had to sit there to watch while they.
So this is what it's gonna look like?
Yeah.
I know, maybe it was, uh, uh, big city.
We painted, I guess.
Yep.
Pete, Pete was down there with us and I think you made the kind of, you did, you wanted to wear, uh, the shape it's in. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's dangerous for sure, so I think it's a prudent move. I, you know, the concern, which I wasn't aware of, but, you know, kids will climb. Uh, so the, the mesh not only will stop rocks from falling, but it'll be pinned down at the bottom so they can't go under it, uh, incline.
It looks good.
So I don't think we have much choice and I'll see if we got good time. He was gonna clarify, uh, they were using, uh, US Steel or anything like that. Did they do that? Or was that?
Didn't see that, but I can double check with them.
I don't think it's that critical, but it was something they had to follow.
Okay. Just looking quickly to see if they have it or not. I can double check.
So are you still contacting others or are you exhausted at that?
I'm exhausted. I love the messages. I haven't heard back. This is the only one that's physically come here and provided a.
Okay.
And this one's been for a year.
So we could, we could approve moving forward the project, but you could hold it for a while while you confirm that nobody else is calling or interested or whatever.
Exactly. We have to have a formal motion at the next board meeting because we don't have the amount on here, so.
Okay. So I guess at this point in time, we would direct staff to continue pursuing the concept because we think it's necessary?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Illinois Public Library Annual Report. Do you just take a motion on that right now? Could we have that motion, please?
I move the authorized library staff to submit the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, the Illinois State Library in compliance with seventy-five ILCS sixteen dash thirty S sixty-five, due September first.
My second.
Thank you. As I recall, you bring it back to us at the next meeting and then we take a look at it.
Yes, I do. I have a draft if anyone wants to look at it. It's all the numbers.
Okay. Roll call. Friedman?
Yes.
Hartens?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Okay. It's too early.
Sorry, yeah. They like to plan ahead there.
I mean, the Halloween costume or stuff just going out. Christmas walk. Say that.
Uh, we usually provide, and our, our good partners, we, uh, so we built a parking lot to be used for the volunteers and for accessible parking, uh, for their Christmas walk they have downtown. We also use the building for the volunteers as a checking point. They have it, that you do that every year, um, as well as closing the other campus. At that time, usually it's extremely busy with Christmas walk. So I try and put the, the patrons of the Christmas walk people on their combo. So then they can have time to make the parking accessible, to have the accessible signs up.
Two opportunities to make a motion. Who wants to make the first one?
I'll make a motion to allow the library parking lot to be used for volunteer and accessible parking for them to be used for volunteers to warm up in exchange for free food at the Christmas walk for the library.
My second.
Thank you. If you have a question, speak up, otherwise roll call, please.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Hartens?
Yes.
Okay, number two. Don't be bashful.
I'll make a motion and post the Aspico campus at two P, um, on Friday, December fifth, twenty twenty-five, to allow the setup for the Christmas walk.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Hartens?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamlin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant? Yes.
Okay, moving on to open session, uh, public comment. Or non-received public comment concerning items on the agenda as well as communications and reports from citizens represented from other agencies. Such comments should not include discussion of personnel matters, which should be brought directly to the attention of the director. The board meeting, meeting is a meeting held in public. It's not a meeting of the public. It is prerogative of the president of the board to recognize members of the audience. If you have, want, if you are to be recognized, address the board. You are asked to stand, identify yourself, and address the whole board. Your comments are limited to three minutes.
Hi, guys. Um, hi, Chris Wong, and congratulations. That is a real mixed, it's a mixed announcement, so I'm happy for you, but I think we're all getting this. Congratulations. So I've been coming for a while. I really appreciate that green slip that you guys put together um, to help make, like, uh, searching for materials safer, um, especially for parents who want a limited, um, exposure. My big thing has been my sexual content, particularly in the children's section, to, um, just make it safer so that they're not accidentally exposed to things that they're not ready to see, um, yet. So, and really, I'll just keep it short and sweet, but when I had met with, um, Sarah and Terry a number of months ago, I had presented a couple of solutions to basically do a similar thing to what you're doing with searching, um, and implement that in physical book looking. Because it's one thing to be able to make a search online safer, but I'm also wanting it to be a little bit safer when the kids are just walking through the book aisles. Um, that we would be able to make that a little bit safer for them, too. Um, and so some of the things that I had suggested, I'd be happy to go into more detail with sometime, but it could be something simple like a sticker on a spine of a book that just says, like, um, mature content or just parental discretion even, just something, just something visual that when someone passes by, they could see. And it would just be like a heads up, like, hey, there might be something in this book that you want to take a look at before your child takes it home and reads it, you know, without you realizing what it's about. Um, there were some other ideas, too, but it could be something very simple, very easy to implement. Um, but just a way to make it safer so that kids aren't accidentally, um, coming across info that they shouldn't see. Um, I did share with you guys a story about my youngest when she was four. You know, I never came to any of these meetings. You guys did not know who I was. I did not know who you were. Um, and then this happened to our family. And I love the library and my mom loves the library and my kids love the library and I want to keep feeling safe here. Um, but basically my daughter picked out a book. It looked really innocent. There was nothing on the cover. There was nothing on the back. There was nothing anywhere that indicated that there was any type of, like, sexual subject matter inside. Um, it just looked like it was about ballet, which was her favorite thing. And, um, we got it home and it was kind of too late once we realized what was inside. It was a book that really had an ulterior motive, I feel, behind it. It wasn't just a book about ballet. It was really a book about some other stuff. And, um, it just forced us to have some conversations that I really did not feel like she was ready for or that I was really ready to have with her. She just wasn't there. And, um, and so that's kind of what started this for me. Um, it was just wanting that to not happen and, um, and just wanting to bring it to your attention so that we can make it a safer place. So, um, along that line, I have two older kids. I have one who is ten, turning eleven. I have another one who's a teenager. They love books. They devour books. They love walking through the library. Um, but I am hearing from them. I'm not fishing for it. But I am hearing increasing comments like, Mom, every time I go, I'm just looking for, like, an adventure book. But they've opened up, um, many and there's pictures of things. There's content. There's just subject matter being discussed that they don't particularly want or like. And so, um, you know, it's on their behalf, too, not just my youngest. But I feel like it's something that's just throughout the children's and the young adult section that we just really should take a look at and see how we can make this safer. And I think this green slip is a really good first step in empowering parents. But I'd also like to see it go, um, farther and to have it be on the physical books themselves since that's what the kids are perusing and checking out, so.
Julie, what was the name of the book?
The name of the one that she read?
Yeah.
I would have to go back. It was a couple of years ago now.
Okay.
But I can go back and find it and, like, I think it's in our checkout history, right? Does it go back? Okay, it would have been, I've been coming here over two years, so it would have been, like, maybe two and a half or three years ago. Um, I would be happy to check, though, if the history says what the, I don't remember the title. I remember it was like a, it was like a little, I think it was a funny, uh, dressed in a ballet outfit. But I don't remember what the title was and I don't remember it super well, so, okay. But, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is a closed session for purchase of, uh, lease of real property for use of public body, uh, and unemployment. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn a regular meeting?
I move a adjourn a regular meeting.
My second.
Okay, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to answer executive question.
Good, second.
Second.
Very good. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a couple of minute scheduled meetings. Truth and taxation hearing will be October nine, nine-second at the Montgomery campus. And our regular meeting will move from September twenty-fourth to September seventeen. And remind everybody about the nineteenth. Reception, retirement reception. Is that it? Well, it's a happy time and a sad time. But, uh, we wish you well. And whatever your endeavor is, as long as it's driving the book mobile. The Sarah mobile. All right, uh, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I move a adjourn.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.